Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Escondido Planning Commission Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 meeting. If you'd all please rise for the flag. And may we have the call?
Chair Paul?
Yes, President.
Vice Chair Barbette. Commissioner Barbara?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald? Commissioner McCarron?
Present.
Commissioner Spear?
Present.
And Commissioner Wyatt?
Here.
First order of business for the evening is approval of the minutes from our January 9th, 2024 meeting. Does anyone have any questions or a motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a vote?
Voting has been opened. If you can refresh your screens, should be available.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What would you like? Okay, that for you? Vote is for one, one abstain. Or four, one approved.
Okay, next item written in oral communications. Do we have any speakers?
We've received no speaking slots at this rate.
Then, public hearings, the first item, PL 21-0057, 335 North Quinn Street, the North County Transit District Fleet Parking. The presenter is Greg Matson.
Good evening.
All right, one second, I always forget. Any disclosures? I should say I was at the site twice and I spoke to an employee there each time. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Eric, sorry.
Thank you. Me, Vice Commissioner, is Greg Matson, project planner for the North County Transit District. As you mentioned, it's an initiative permit for a fleet storage facility. As you can see on the screen, we have the general plan. That is GI, which is General Industrial, and then Sony is M1, which is Life Industrial. It's on the corner of Plinlar and Quince.
Greg, could you move the microphone?
Sorry, I'll move forward, thank you. The project site is adjacent to the existing North County Transit Maintenance Facility. That's really located on Norlack. The site is approximately indicated in yellow. Here is 1.24 acres, surrounded by line industrial uses to the east, west, north, and across. There's Escondido Creek downtown, some speak plant. To the east is actually the Fire Station, Escondido Fire Station number one. Here's some photos of the site itself. The first one up left is looking west along Escondido Creek. Then to the right is looking south at the corner, looking towards Quince. And then the one on the left corner is west, looking from Quinn Street towards Norlack. Then looking south from Norlack into the site itself. Project proposal is 1256,110 per feet of paving for 84 fleet vehicle storage parking spaces, as you can see in the black there. They're proposing to close three existing residences, entrances, one on Norlack and two on Quinn Street. They're going to consolidate the site into one access point on Norlack Avenue and provide internal circulation between the two parcels. Providing, they also provide screening wall, proper landscaping, and street trees as replacement. They're purposing this site, which is the old Wonder Bread site, you'll remember that for the folks who've been around long enough, is integrated into the existing. So they're going to use one consolidated facility for maintenance and fleet storage as well. On this screen here, you can see the existing maintenance facility in yellow. The expansion site is in red, which is to the east, and that's on the corner of Norlack and Quince. You can see how it's easily integrated within the existing site itself in terms of maintenance and operation. A step to a landscape plan, landscape will be in accordance with the city's landscape coordinates. New sidewalks and landscaping along the street perimeter. And then two closures on Quinn's Avenue. New landscaping buffer along Escondido Creek, they have a 10-foot set back buffer there with a wall and lines on it. In case you have approval to ensure maintenance and landscape performance. Official approval will also have other conditions to assist with street improvements and structural permits to do the street improvements along Quince and Norlack. Staff recommendation is line permission approved, resolution 24-02, approving PL 21-0057, approving the condition of use permit, and we did file an extension, some exemption, a model. And that is staff's presentation. Will be able to answer any question. Give me air.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question?
Yeah, the only question that I have is, so, there's the expansion, and I'm glad you brought this up. The, the, looks like parking area to the north on the other side of the front of the street there. Is that gonna, is that utilized for bus parking right now?
That's correct. That's actually part of their site as well, when it's for parking and during his flip-flop, they'll base on a EV bus. Their representative here is also, maybe I want to ask you some questions, but yeah, that's part of storage. And so the storage there is going to be transferred over to the expansion site. And then they're going to reutilize the parcel.
And do we know what it's going to be utilized for?
Again, the applicant's here, he asked your question.
Okay.
It is basically, it's EV, EV bus, bus storage as well as expanding. I don't know exactly what the technology is they're putting in across the street.
Yeah, and before you answer, I just want to make sure we don't kind of jump ahead of ourselves here. If there's, that's the only questions I have for staff. And maybe if there's any other questions for staff.
Well, I do, but that's okay, you can, you can get yours answered.
Go ahead, thank you.
So Mark Peterson, architect with STV Incorporated, where the designers record for the facility improvements. And basically what we're seeing here is they used to have employee parking in that northwest parking lot. There's bus parking now. This is enabled, to enable the district to start meeting their car mandated zero mission bus program by 2020. So they're going to have, implement a battery electric bus, EV bus program. I think six to eight electric buses at this facility. And just the way things worked out with STG and their ability to look at the power of the site. They are proposing this project to relocate the vehicles that were in the northwest, South East, and the buses will go up where their current facilities are. And that, of course, will be phased out over time.
Okay, all right, that was it for my questions, thank you.
So I was a little bit confused. The staff report says that there is no additional employment, no additional jobs, and no expansion of activity. It uses the term like reorganization or something. So there are no, there are no, there's no economic activity resulting from this?
Not particularly, because again, it's to be a paving for their buses and their cars and fleet for maintenance operations, we can go across to the other side. So yeah, there's nothing there other than paving, parking lot. By code, we have to have screening and landscaping and stuff, so you won't be visible from Norlack or Quince. It's got to be some of the top vehicle, very, very top vessels. But there's no economic value in terms of, there's no employment there, that's correct.
Okay, so in your report, it talks about Article 57 provisions?
Yes.
And then there's specifically Number 7, that a demand analysis and mitigation, as specified in 33-1125, has to be done? And at 33-1125 was not included in the package, but it calls for, "The applicant shall prepare market demand analysis that analyzes and substantiates the need for the proposed facility in the city." Approved projects, approval projects may be approved if the use is in the best interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare based on consideration of the demand analysis and the following criteria. The economic impact of the project to the city, including but not limited to demonstrated positive fiscal benefits to the city. And then it ends with any proposed mitig, any proposed mitigation measures that would reduce the economic impacts of a non-tax or non-job producing use or uses. So I didn't see any study that, along these lines, that's a requirement for us to approve this project.
So I'll go ahead and jump in on that question, Chair Paul. The expansion site, this is not a new use that is coming into this overall site. The NCTD Maintenance Facility has been in existence and operating and provides jobs based on whatever their current operations are. The expansion site is a property that NCTD owns and is requesting to integrate into their existing facility in order to accommodate their electric bus storage or electric vehicle storing at the northern site. So this isn't a new independent use that is being proposed as a result of the use permit. It is them asking to expand their, their use.
Well, the, this section says additional or expansion, says new or expanded.
And so it's my impression that staff did not require a demand analysis for this request because of the nature of the expansion?
But it's a requirement of the code.
If Planning Commission may act to continue or table the item, if they want to require the applicant to provide that demand analysis, that's an option that can be motioned by the commission.
Okay, I mean, the first thing I thought about when I saw this was, oh, this is going to be some jobs. And then when I saw no, no jobs, I said, oh, wow, why would, why would NCT be, be doing a project that has no economic activity? Now I hear it's because they're switching to electric buses. But there still needs to be, we're losing that site potential, so there needs to be some benefit to the city. I mean, that's what, my opinion, and then that's what the statute. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Having nothing to do with the statute, but just fast and clarity around this. Currently, their facility there, required to be converted to open parking. They have more buses than they have parking spaces, and they aren't going to have off-races. They can transit service. When you switch to a battery electric technology, you have to literally plug the bus and you have to set location. The add-on parking goes away. What that means is you have a greater day at the park and transit vehicles than you did before. There was a side of the spot, you know, there were plenty of. So that's why we say that you can.
Right. Okay, so we could park the buses, oh, in Delmar or Solana Beach or some other place too? And they wouldn't have, they would have no economic activity there instead of Escondido. Just, I think that's why this statute is written the way it is. Okay, thank you.
I would just like to say, I think the benefit to the city is the improvements on the site. Quince is not the best-looking part of town, and I can appreciate the development of the landscaping and screening certainly helps to create a better atmosphere on a really rough area.
Okay, deliberation.
I'm curious about what you, the question you brought up, and my question is, the interpretation of what statute are we required to do that analysis?
I think I read it and that's what it said. If you look in the staff report, page 12, Article 57 is at the very bottom. No storage, no fleet storage or tow yard project shall, project shall be granted a permit unless the following requirements are satisfied. And then that's one of the requirements.
Can you read the requirements specifically, verbatim?
So Number 7 is fleet storage as a principal use, demand analysis, mitigation, as specified in Section 33-25. Demand analysis and mitigation, and then.
And to the city staff, the rationale for that not being required is what?
She said it was an addition, so this starts off, the first word is modifications or additions to existing facilities shall be subject to the same review procedure.
I would like to ask the city attorney her opinion on this.
I believe it's within the commission's discretion whether the commission wants to rely on the interpretation of staff or to request that that additional study.
I'm, when I'm reading this, and we're talking about, what page were you on? I'm reading on page 13, line item seven?
Seven is on 13.
Yeah, so fleet storage as a principal use. I don't think fleet storage is the principal use. It seems like this is an accessory to what's going on, because this is kind of all one big. If this was, this expansion area was located, I don't know, a block over, then it seems like that would be the primary use. But it's right adjacent to the maintenance, so to me, it kind of looks like it's accessory to the primary use, which is the NCTD Maintenance Facility. That's how I'm kind of reading this and interpreting it. But, but you do bring up a very interesting point, is, okay, if the code says certain things, then, and we're not doing those certain things, I guess it then relies back on the interpretation that staff is making that this demand analysis does not need to be done. And then there's got to be somewhere in code that gives staff the ability to make that determination, I guess, that we don't need to do this further analysis. I guess that's how I kind of look at this.
I appreciate that. I guess, take that a step further. Say we had done the analysis and we have that result with us, then what? The purpose of the analysis is what? I think that's what we need to drive at. If we're, if we're not fulfilling a purpose that's needed by neglecting to do something, that's one thing, but if the purpose is void, then maybe it's not necessary. Maybe we need to be asking, what is the purpose of doing? What is the statute written in to accomplish?
Right. Yeah, if the end result is, the only way that you can approve this is after a demand analysis is completed, and then that demand analysis says it has to be a tax benefit or some other benefit, then, yeah, that kind of makes some sense, then it kind of paints us all into a corner.
But, so I think the closest thing to that is the last part that says, "Any proposed mitigation measures that would reduce the economic impact of a non-tax or non-job producing use or uses." And this is both non-taxes and non-jobs. So that's, sorry, that's part's not included there. That's, part's not in the staff report, it's on 33-1125.
So what we're saying, I believe, is we're trying to make sure we're not reducing the functionality or benefit of a piece of property.
Right, what's the city's benefit?
The analysis helps us understand whether that's happening or not. At this point, all we can do is guess.
Right, that's why I asked about, is there any jobs? Is there any economic?
Okay, but we, this is not the primary use, this is an accessory use. Is that correct?
Well, you, you said that, but this is, all this is, is a parking lot.
Yeah, but it's associated with the maintenance facility. And that, and here's how I look at it, is all access has been eliminated off-site. They have to go through the NCTD site.
But that, that site's not part of, we don't know anything about that site. This whole.
Existing and operating.
No, I mean, according to this, we don't know anything about it. This is all about the parking lot.
So, okay, but I guess the question I'm coming up with, and maybe I missed it in the staff report, that this is considered an accessory to the primary use. And maybe that's not stated in there, maybe it is, I didn't, I don't know 100%.
Are we asking the question, what, what are we missing out? What is this site missing out on by, by going this route? What are we missing out on? Is that what the analysis is intended to provide?
Maybe.
So if staff can interject, based on the fact that this application was submitted in 2021, and there was a previous administration directing staff on how to handle processing of this permit, I'm not privy to those conversations of what was directed. However, I do concur with Commissioner Wyler's assessment that this is not the primary use of the site because it is being integrated into an existing facility. It is NCTD who is asking to expand their operations and maintenance facility, and the expansion just happens to be parking facility. However, that parking facility is not an independent, single utility standalone. It is integrated and a part of the greater NCTD Maintenance Facility, specifically in order to accommodate the EV buses that are now being utilized by NCTD. So I would concur, it's a primary, not a primary use. I'll differ to the project planner who's been working on this, if he has any additional insights regarding that, or otherwise, if there's not anything contradictory to it being an ancillary use.
I would, thank you, I would also guess that because NCTD purchases property for primary use, so to be able to utilize the existing maintenance facility, share facilities, eliminate the driveways, so it really is going to be accessory use to the maintenance facility, this property. Also, as Mark mentioned, the applicant, is that they are trying to juggle storage with EV bus parking and how the new technology is working and people need space. And in this case here, they decided to purchase a property next door to be able to have some flexibility within their maintenance, to be able to move buses in and out out of the maintenance facility, but temporarily park them there on the sites of creating the whole site as one facility and one operation.
Okay, and this is why I was thinking of this as an accessory use. If we look on page 12 under zoning conformance, it's kind of the third line down, that says, "Open storage is permitted as an accessory use." So I think that as I was reading the staff report, that, yeah, it's an accessory use to the NCTD Maintenance Facility. I can't, I think that's what I interpreted as I was going through this. That's why I didn't raise the issue that you're, you're raising, which is very valid in that, all right, well, are we really supposed to do this demand analysis?
Also, if staff may interject, what the commission could also propose as part of their motion is to require a lot tie between the two lots, so that NCTD cannot, at a future point, relinquish that standalone lot for the purposes of a standalone parking lot. So that is, if the commission were to motion on this for approval or recommendation to continue or table the item, that's something that could occur.
Right, then we'd officially be tying the two things together. So we heard tonight that this lot is going to be, is necessary for EVs. Does that mean that it's going to be reconfigured with electrical vehicle charging on this lot? Or is that going someplace else?
What Mark was alluding to is a parcel to the north, where we have that there. I think they're converting that because of electricity with STG facilities. They're playing the EV buses up there, transferring the bus storage over here to the, to the expansion site, incorporating that into the maintenance facility itself. It doesn't preclude them something in the future, certainly, they could certainly change that use in there, maybe make that EV charging. But again, that part's an upgrade on their part from STG, but again, there's not enough space there.
So the, I'm sorry, so the EV charging is not going on here where it says expansion?
On the expansion site, no. The buses that are being stored across the street on Norlack will be transferred over to the expansion site, along with other facilities, maintenance facilities they have on site. They'll be moving buses in and out based on operational needs.
All right, well, okay.
And if I made, there's that number eight underneath the article, it says fleet storage is accessory use.
Right.
That's, again, we perceive this as being all one facility of maintenance, because they purchased the property next door, and they would not be able to make this work for them internally. And as you mentioned, which one I haven't mentioned, but they're closing the two curb cuts on Quince, and one on Norlack, and they're consolidating into one main entrance coming in there controlling internal circulation.
Okay, so I don't really see this as an accessory use then, because this, this parking lot could be anywhere. Either, either this one lets label the expansion site or the one north of it, either one of those parking lots could be anywhere, but they're just a parking lot. They could be in Delmar or Solana Beach, and not taking the lot.
And Commissioner, through the chair, that's, that's true. You could have these parking lots elsewhere, but in this case here, this is their main maintenance facility. So moving buses around and stuff would actually be, I think, a little more problematic in terms of shuffling the buses and maintenance, if they're able to have some accessory uses next door to be able to have the, the parking buses and the facilities they need. So again, they're trying to juggle their maintenance and moving buses in and out of maintenance, and I think this gives them an opportunity to do so, a little more efficiency.
Right, but we, we don't know anything about this other site, existing NCT Maintenance Facility. It looks like it has lots of parking on it already. So we, we don't really know how, if these expansion site, either of these sites isn't, is an integral part of, of the facility itself, or if they're just parking lots.
I don't know their operations that well, maybe Mark can address that.
What I was trying to, put here as a pretend is, everything that's going on in the expansion site used to go in the northwest side of the buses. That's where the employee parking was. At the end of the night, when they had the family buses, they had buses stacked up in that corner of the lot, just sort of add-on. Like I said, you can't do that without the technology. So all of those vehicles that used to be able to be parked up there, the employees, what we refer to as non-governors, supervisors, vehicles that are out on the road, check buses, all those are going over to the expansions. So those are people, absolutely 100% of the necessary operations. NCTD vehicles are owned by the district, owned by the district's employees, so that they can do their job as bus drivers, as mechanics, as administrative staff, wellness staff, whatnot. So they cannot get rid of the expansion site and maintain their operation. It just cannot happen. The other point is that, I think there is an accident because directly from the expansion site. But it's absolutely imperative that they have that lot where they're up, this zero maintenance. Not absolute park their employees in cars. So they can't make that Joe's parking, put out a shape of the sentence, fall on all of you. It's where their employees.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So in the earlier staff report, there's a comment here. "The proposed expansion of the fleet vehicle storage consists of 22 full-size van stalls revenue and 62 vehicles, non-revenue stalls, a total of 84 new parking stalls. No employee parking is proposed with the project, as the proposed expansion would not result in any new staff on site." So what's a, so that says no employee parking, but what's the revenue and a non-revenue stall? What, what is that?
Mark, I think, Mark just described that, it's.
So NCTD operates a number of transit services. The most common one that you'll see is three, some transit facilities going around. They also have paratransit, lock-and-man, these are smaller, help our way vans, that disable people, we need a doctor's appointment or something like that. So that adds some revenue, be able to, small revenue vehicles, a van, that would be parked on the site. The non-revenue vehicles might be, mostly they're supervisor vehicles. So the bus driver is been out on the road doing his route, and he needs to be relieved, that driver will be driven out to someplace along the street. The supervisor got them off, they could get the driver, bring that, be able to drive us somewhere else. So that's the nature, I guess, of the way that parking will happen.
Okay, so. So what I just read also, it says no employee parking is proposed for the.
Then that's probably definitely what I was saying. So they probably continue to park during the day, follow the drivers, everything.
Okay. And thank you very much. And then you said something else about tow trucks. So under eight, it's storage as an accessory use, it says no tow trucks. Shall not include the following: tow truck, trailer, tractor, trailer, or semi-trailer designed to pull or transport. So, okay. I'm, I'm done. Yes. You want me to make a motion? Does somebody else want to make a motion? I, I make a motion that we kick this back to staff for demand analysis and economic study. Do I have a second?
I'll just comment, since I haven't commented. I do want the chair to know that I actually do appreciate and admire the points that you've brought up and the questions you've asked. But after hearing all the information provided by staff, by the applicant, and the comments by my fellow commissioners, I am satisfied that this is an accessory use. And I also feel that this meets a need that the NCTD it has to have, or... I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support the motion, I'm going to support approving the staff's recommendation.
Do we have a good motion? Do we have another motion?
To approve the staff recommendation.
I'll make a comment, because I likewise appreciate your, your scrutinizing of the issue and looking at those points. Much appreciate. What I'm looking at is, back to the purpose of why we would do this study, I'm concerned that, you know, we make sure, I, my interpretation is the intent is probably so that we make sure that we make the best use of the properties and that we don't, you know, that we, that's studied and that's investigated. I think we're talking about the same owner of the property using it one way or another. So I don't see the results of that study being fruitful for the purpose that it was designed for. For that reason, I feel comfortable not exercising. So I would, I'm in support of second.
Is, is that a second?
It is.
Okay. Call for a vote?
Give me one moment to write all of that. Voting has been opened, motion to approve the request. Does it have a refresh option for you, ma'am?
No, it just hasn't signed in.
Oh. Just wanted, I have audits. If you would like, you can give me your verbal.
I'll apply the motion for me.
The current motion was presented by Commissioner Macaro to approve the request.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go verbally if you wish.
I vote to support the Commissioner's motion.
Voting is closed, the voting is four, one, to approve, with Chair Paul voting that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next item of business, current business, historic preservation commission. This is a discussion, and who would like to lead? Do you have this put on, David?
Yes, I did, so I will lead. Well, I'll just begin by saying that historical preservation of architecture and neighborhoods in Escondido is something I feel very passionate about, especially in the old Escondido neighborhoods. These are neighborhoods that represent an Escondido of a different era, an Escondido of a different character, an Escondido of a different identity. And I'd like the city to develop as many, as the tools it needs to help preserve the architecture and the character of these neighborhoods. So when I heard that the, a subcommittee of the city council is, was proposing to do away with the one tool we have, the historical preservation commission, I'm concerned, and I wanted to investigate why they're making this recommendation, and if so, what the alternatives are. So as I've been trying to dig into this, what I have learned is the subcommittee's concern is that the HPC is interfering in their goal to help expedite and make less costly increasing affordable housing in Escondido. That the subcommittee, they feel, is delaying the progress of projects. As told for two reasons. One, is difficulty in the past of getting quorums, that they've had a problem in the past of having only three of the seven appear at, here is to evaluate the projects. Although I also understand that the current makeup of the HPC is not having to repeat that role. Then the other is that they're concerned that the HPC doesn't really understand the mechanics of planning and the vision that the city has in planning. And that their lack of understanding of these issues is delaying projects' progress to where it's costing the projects money and also adding to staff costs. So it is my understanding that the subcommittee, which the subcommittee is Mayor White and Commissioner, excuse me, Councilwoman Martinez, is proposing that the HPC be dissolved, but the duties that the HPC had not be eliminated, but instead transferred to the planning commission. So my questions are, because I'm in a situation where I support both goals. I, I want to preserve the character of the architecture and the neighborhoods, but I also support wanting to streamline the process and make the planning process more timely and less costly to the projects. So is, there, can their recommendation manage to provide to the planning commission the tools we need to provide the same evaluation, make the same judgment as the HPC? And if not, are there other alternatives? So that's what I've been concerned about, that's what I'm interested in. And I'm curious as to what my fellow commissioners might have on this subject.
I can start with that one. I work on a lot of historic projects throughout San Diego, recently completed in Bankers Hill, where we do redevelopment of historic buildings and, you know, create commercial spaces or multifamily units. And I've done that on a scale of, you know, retail with housing above and full-blown multifamily projects in these historic buildings. Very familiar with working with the city of San Diego on their guidelines for historic requirements. Every time we have a project that's a historic building, we always get a historic permit. And that entails, you know, showing what you're preserving, understanding what you can paint a color, what needs to be approved, and that is different in every city. So for San Diego, for instance, I can paint the building whatever color I want. In Escondido, if I'm correct, Veronica, I believe I cannot. It ha, the paint color actually has to be approved.
That is correct.
Yeah. So they vary from city to city. For instance, Carlsbad doesn't even have one. So I'm doing a 1930s Tudor remodel right now, and we absolutely did not have to preserve anything. So it's, it's really fantastic that Escondido still has an HPC. I do believe, because we are all intelligent folks and we have engineers and planners and investigative journalists on our, you know, on our commission, I do believe, especially with my experience, having to get permits to do these projects, that we can take on the duties. Knowing everyone that is on the HPC right now, knowing that they are very, and first off, they're most, all are familiar or live in Old Escondido, so the passion for them drives from living in historic homes themselves. But I, I feel, I was actually glad when I saw that they were considering giving the planning commission some of these duties, based on my experience alone. It's more than what anyone on the HPC has currently. And on the flip side, I also want Escondido to really appreciate what the HPC can do in creating, you know, a historic destination that we could be, like other cities have become, like Old Town Temecula, Old Town itself. You know, we, we, as a city, have completely ignored our historic history. We've completely chosen to look the other way and not celebrate it. And that also gives me a little bit of hope that if the duties did, they'd come to the planning commission, we might have a little bit more discussion about them, almost all of us.
I, I'll interject that I was, I wanted very much to have a handle on how much money this would be saving if it was absorbed into the values. And I really couldn't get an answer, okay? So I was told, it was explained to me that, yes, there's definitely going to be a savings to the city with staff not servicing the HPC, especially when the meetings seem to be, be passed on month, the bi-month. But I couldn't get an exact figure and just, my feeling of common sense is the savings to the city might be minimal. But then I also asked about, well, how much do you, would the city anticipate that the projects would save if it was brought over to the planning commission? And the rough answer I received was approximately $100,000. And I think if that's true, $100,000 is significant. And then again, this falls back to those of us who do want to see the, the permit process, the build planning process in Escondido be more streamlined and, and cost reduced so we can help encourage more affordable housing in Escondido. So I'm comfortable that if we could understand what we need to evaluate to preserve the historical integrity of these homes and these neighborhoods, I, I would be in support of coming to the planning commission.
Yes. Staff would just like to interject that the city's planning division has not yet identified firmly who will be delegated what responsibilities. What city planning staff can tell you is that there is no intent to eliminate any of the required historic preservation mechanisms that are identified in Article 40. But I want to caution commission from assuming that all of HPC's responsibilities will be delegated to them. As that is not yet decided upon, from a recommendation perspective of staff, we're still waiting to get further input from city council at the January 31st meeting.
I do know that a current responsibility that HPC has had to look at the planning commission is they're not going to hold to us the application for Mills Act. Subcommittee currently is proposing, or will be proposing, to pass that, to actually, city staff to move to the straight.
So Mills Act contracts are a, a contract, and so they will ultimately go to city council for ultimate decision-making? Just to clarify that.
Okay, very good. Just wanted, I was just trying to make it clear, so I can tell this by.
Correct.
I didn't hear the question.
I asked if they currently went to city council, I couldn't remember, and they do.
Well, I guess, I'm wondering if there's a feeling among, first of all, I wonder if there's a consensus among the planning commission on what we would like to see go forward with the subcommittee of the city council regarding the HPC and/or the planning commission. And so if there's a consensus, do we want to have our consensus expressed to the city council?
From my point of view, I would defer, I think it's premature. If they would like to ask our opinion, I think it'd be appropriate at this point. There's a lot that they haven't done or decided, so I'd rather wait and see. Before the planning commission says anything, I'd prefer that we wait and see what they would like, if anything, for us to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say the same thing, that I'm not in favor of presenting any opinion to the city council.
You know, when we originally started this discussion, I had real concerns about disbanding the HPC because of what I perceived was their expertise in what it was that, that they were tasked to review and approve or provide a recommendation. And what I'm, what I'm hearing and what I'm finding is, you know, they're having a problem with a quorum. Maybe they're not the experts that I had perceived that they might be. And it doesn't bother me now at this point, after I've heard some of our discussion and some of the things that I've read, that their duties be pushed forward to the planning commission. So I, I really don't have a problem if that becomes the case. It seems that a lot of projects that come forward to us that have that historic preservation component, the analysis is done, we see the analysis. The only thing that's, you know, maybe missing is a potential recommendation that comes out of the HPC. But I think as a planning commission, we're perfectly qualified to review that analysis and the recommendation by staff based on regulations that are, you know, come from the state and the local ordinances, that that information will be presented to us in a way that we can make those determinations as well. Now, maybe from an architectural standpoint, you know, some of us are going to be more qualified than others. But I think that we can certainly evaluate what's presented to us in a good and logical manner to make a recommendation, whether to approve or, or make a recommendation to the city council on, on whether or not the recommendations from staff are appropriate. So with that, I'm perfectly comfortable taking on, you know, that review role as an approving body that HPC currently has. But I have to agree with the chair and Commissioner Spear. Yeah, I, I think we need to kind of wait and see how things kind of play out before we, as a commission, make a recommendation to city council. I, I'm not ready to do that at this point.
Just for entrance, for people, I don't know if you, any of you saw the article that was in the San Diego Union Tribune, that the city of San Diego is actually considering relaxing their historic guidelines for, for development.
Yes, I saw that. Okay, Chair Paul, that's the discussion I was hoping to have.
All right, great. Okay. Future agenda items, does any of the commissioners want to put anything on future agenda? Okay. Oral communications, one last chance. All right. Planning commissioners' reports? Thing, good. City planners' report tentative future agenda.
Yes, so not a significant amount of changes since last time. We will have potentially a cancellation on the 13th of February. That will be firmed up once the notice deadline has passed, but currently there are no projects anticipated for that deadline, for that date. We do anticipate a February 27th meeting. And not currently on the TFA because I believe it came through today, but there was, you will all have received an email, I sent it this evening, on behalf of our city's traffic engineering division with information regarding certain Escondido mobility planning efforts that the city's traffic engineering team have underway, asking for you. have underway, asking for you to provide input or share, I should say, with your networks as residents, community members, and includes the appropriate links to those project webpages and that sort of thing, along with the appropriate traffic engineering contact, should you have questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.